All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting order on March the 11th, 2025. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the roll call.
Van Witter present.
Breida Pittcock present.
Rex Snyder present.
Gene Gaver present.
Nathan Horwitz present.
All right, we have a guest with us tonight, Ms. Joyce Marshall. Joyce unfortunately had a water leak in her basement over the freezing cold months and did not realize it until the guys went over to do the reed of the water and noticed that it was super high and realized something was not good. And about the time they shut it off is about the time they start realizing the rugs in the house were wet because the water had filled the basement up and was getting ready to come through the floor. So it was a very unfortunate circumstance for her. So I'll let you, you want to say anything?
You can just lead your case.
Yeah, I apologize for all this happening to you guys. I didn't have any idea if I had it, I would have immediately done something.
Well, I don't think it's your fault by any means. Lenny, what can you tell us? Was the leak in the property, was it in the yard?
It was under the house, in the basement. It was in the basement.
The cold water or was it the hot water?
That I'm not sure. It was a line going over, I think it was the line going over to the spigot outside maybe because it looked to me like it was the one going underneath, going out the wall.
So the reason I asked, I noticed the electric is really high too. So I wondered if it was actually the hot water and the electric was up so high because of the hot water heater was.
She also said that she had problems with her electric.
I don't know. There was actually at the front last there was no pressure at all. So I don't know.
Do you have an electric water heater or is it gas?
Yeah, I did buy her a couple of space heaters that she's had in over the coast belt. So it might be those space heaters I got her.
Yeah, could be, it could be.
Definitely.
I just noticed the, the electric portion is extremely high, so.
I'm sure that's space heaters.
So I just wanted to make sure that we're kind of, we're thinking on the same, the same page here if it was the water heater or not from the water.
It could be, it could be the space heaters doing it.
Was your furnace completely out?
It went completely out. I have nothing.
So she was heating with completely.
The space heaters.
So that would, that explains that.
So my first question is probably for Julie.
I wonder in the past day.
Water did not technically go down the sewage drain, which were we able to get a write-off from the sewage district on the wastewater?
We will be able to take her down to her normal average on the sewer, yes. What she's here for today to see what our policy is, is if someone has a leak over 100,000 gallons, they can come and request hardship. I think the last policy we had was we would split it in half before that they would, it's, it's just up to you, but a minimum of the, we would split the water portion in half and write off half of it.
So taking the sewer off, then what's the balance of the water?
Her water bill was 953 and typically it's about 33. So she's about $920 above normal.
Okay, and that's removing the sewer charges.
Yeah.
920.
Yeah, that's strictly the water cost. So if we do that in half, it's like 410. And then would you spread that out over a time on her bill?
Is this the first time you've requested this? Would you have been living on that?
Yeah, it's the first time.
Any questions from the board?
I would just need to know how far out you want to. We're splitting it 50%, taking off half of it.
Do we have to have a motion on that?
We will, and then how far out you want to give her.
Like over a year or something?
Do you remember what we set the precedence with the last time?
I'm thinking we did six months.
Would six months work for you? So then she wouldn't have late fees or anything on that over the six months?
No.
That would be roughly $70 a month?
On top of your regular bill, is that something that you can handle?
Pardon? I'm not sure.
It's going to be $70 plus your water bill. Can you handle that?
I think so. I think I can.
Over six months?
For six months.
Okay, that would be good. That would be good.
Okay, motion on the floor?
I make a motion, we accept the agreement we talked about.
Second. Well, there's a motion in the second to accept the water agreement to cut the water cost in half and charge that over a six-month period. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'll put it in writing and, and get that sent to you so that you have it there. That'll make it a little easier for you to understand. No, you're welcome to stay if you like.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Everyone had a chance to look over the minutes and adjustments? And if so, we'll seek approval for those.
I make a motion to accept the minutes and adjustments. Sense presenting.
There's a second? Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, Mr. Officer Frame, you're up for the police report, sir.
Yeah. I don't know if I was introduced last time. I was, I'm Officer Cody Frame with Cambridge's Police Department. I'm going to be doing this from now on, so you'll, you guys will see me. So if you guys have any questions, you can. Yeah, I got stuck with it. So for this month, for February, we had one abdominal pain. We had three business checks. I know there's a gentleman on Main Street that has a garage. He requested more business checks on that. We had one drug incident, one mischief incident, one property damage wreck, one personal assist, two speak with officers, one suspicious activity, one suspicious person, and 12 traffic stops. I know my, me myself, I've been trying to make more traffic stops. We've had a lot of movement in, in this area. So we're trying to get a lot more traffic stops in the, in Dublin. We have one unknown problem, one unsecured building, a vehicle lockout, two VIN checks, and two welfare checks done. So a total of 31 calls for the month of February.
Any questions for Officer Frame?
Are the majority of the traffic stops on 40, is that, you guys trying to slow that down a little bit?
The majority is, it's just, it's not necessarily certainly trying to, I don't know, I can't say what everybody else has been stopping vehicles for. It's the easiest to get stops on. Like if they pull off of, say Davis Street, they usually go into Main Street. So 40 is usually where you'll see us. I try to get on the main streets. I know we've had some complaints on State Road about speeders. So we've watched that. Maple Street, I, I think someone had a traffic stop on that one February. I can't, I'm not for sure though, but it's mainly on, on Main Street. Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, if you guys have any more questions?
No. Appreciate it. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Just a reminder, we're getting into warmer weather. It is time to renew your golf cart permits because they will also be policing that and patrolling for that as well.
All right, Chief Myers for the fire report.
February 2025, BLS 0, BLS 156. Had five wounds with reed. Fire runs, there's two carbon monoxide checks and one assist to strong on structural fire and zero water.
Questions for Chief? Very good. Lenny, you're up for a building report, sir?
It was for Maple Street bathroom remodel.
They are working on it as we speak. It's not been raining out there today.
Yes, they are.
All right, any questions for Lenny on the building information report? All right, next up is your superintendent's report while you're wearing the hat.
Guys have that. Kind of give you guys a monthly projection at the bottom. So you guys kind of know what my next month's projection of things to be done is. Maybe that'll help you guys a little bit.
If you can definitely keep the landscaping around the water fountain, the doll water fountain on your priority list. I know the family was there this weekend and they got really nervous when they seen things get tore out because I got messages at 10 o'clock Saturday night for about a half hour. Wanted to know what was going on and so forth. So I hopefully got that, calmed it down as best as I could.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything, so you did a good job. Appreciate that. I appreciate that. Yes. I'll begin with Cecil and we'll be looking at plants and things like that and going in the direction that you guys had decided back in the fall. So, and then we've, I know we got signs to put up and all sorts of stuff. So there's going to be a lot of stuff done down there in the next month or so.
Everything cool on the upcoming mowing season? Anything we should be alerted about?
I don't think so. I think we're pretty good.
Do you want to give a quick update on the water project as of this point?
So they are now installing meters. The valves are done except for the one at the tower. We'll be discussing that. What did I do with it? Anyway, here, I'll just look here. They actually, so the original for them to put a line stop in and change that valve at the tower was like $18,435. That was after they couldn't put the other valve in. So then I proposed that we drain the tower instead of putting the line stop in. And so that price, if we drain the tower, will be $8,453.13. So I know this is all a part that was in the grant and it was already in there for, I think it was $10,000 for the insertion valve. So I mean, just by draining the tower, it's, it's going to allow us to have those funds to put at other things that have come up. So, you know, so that's, that's what's going on there.
So this price is already included in what we've already approved?
Yes. It's already in what was approved.
Do they need to issue a negative change order for that amount?
They will have to, yes.
And then if something else comes up, then that, then we'll still have that money for another change order?
Yes, yes. And that's the way that will work. So it, it, I know everybody's like, drain the water down, drain this, but it's not that big of a job. I mean, we'll run on high service pumps for a couple of days till we get good samples back and then, you know, we'll let them back in service.
This might happen or do you know?
Well, I have to, I'll be on a call with Rob Belushi tomorrow. So we'll discuss there and probably if everything is good and we get the change orders done and all that, I think probably within the next, probably two weeks, I would say anyway. Because they're, they're doing meters right now. So when they finish those up, then they'll probably jump back over there to that and finish that up.
And this would call it?
Should not because we'll be able to isolate that tower. So we'll just pull our samples from the tower and we won't have to, we shouldn't have to do any boil advisories.
It's like, if we do, let's try and do it on a Monday to give Lakeview as much time as they have to recover.
I will be, I will get a date, an tentative date out as soon as possible if we, so that this is going to happen. And then if we have to do a boil advisory, then we have time to get that out before it actually takes place. So. So.
Anything like that we can do on Monday to get it?
Right.
Because Lakeview is close on Monday.
That'll be done in, that'll be done in a couple of hours, you know? So then within that couple of hours, as soon as they're done, then we go back.
Boil order.
That's what I'm saying. As soon as they're done, then, you know, our line pressure's not going to drop below 25 PSI, so we shouldn't have to do a boil advisory. So, so once we fill the tower back up, then I'll just, we'll close that off and I'll just pull samples from the tower. And whenever we get cleared, then we'll open it back up.
Part of the reason the other one was extended is because they had problems
With the other ones?
With the, with the shut offs and trying to get the water shut off to that one valve. We did notify the people that were originally affected by that. And it had to be expanded and we didn't know how far we were going to have to expand it. So we finally just went with a townwide. They didn't end up having to do a townwide, but we'd already put the alerts out. So we left that and were able to get our samples back quicker. So we didn't end up, we got it, we got it lifted at Thursday at four instead of Friday at four. So it, it did end up getting a little better, but it was, it was confusing. And we appreciate everybody's understanding. And in that, we'll say that there is potential as we continue with grant work on the, all of our water projects that, you know, this could be, there could be situations like this in the future. And the best thing to do is to sign up for our notification system. And that way you will be updated as soon as we're updated.
Thank you. Anything else for Lenny?
Yeah, I just have the, so you guys have the copies of these bucket trucks?
Have we determined a budget?
That's, that's another reason. That's another reason.
I think we were waiting on Lenny to give his idea. Because we really didn't have any idea because we haven't bought a bucket truck in what, 40 years?
Yeah. 45 years, yeah.
Rex can tell us the exact date probably.
And how much is Milton? What did you decide with Milton?
I can't remember what we decided back, was it, I think it was around 15, wasn't it?
Talking earlier about 15, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was around 15, so.
Have they paid us yet or is that?
No.
Did they get delivery?
No, we will have to write up an agreement with them.
And what are we doing with Milton?
Selling our old truck.
So I guess, can you kind of do these like number one, like kind of give us?
These are the two he's talked about. He's talking about number one and number three. I'll get it roped down for you.
Those are the two that I, I personally feel most comfortable with. And I do have a call out for the, I think it's number, number one. I do have a call out for number one to to a friend of mine that, to get some records on that truck. So.
Well, they are both of you.
Sitting on the same lot, same people?
Or is this two separate?
This is the same company. It's two separate places where these trucks come from, but it's the same company. And this is what they do. They.
So are they sitting on the same lot today?
Yes, they are sitting on the same lot. All four of these trucks.
Have us taken a drive and actually seen them in person and test driving them and?
It's really good.
Okay.
Hello? Yeah, Rick?
The.
I am in a board meeting.
The first quotes that he got, I'll kind of give you an update a little bit while he's, while he's going. The first quotes that he got were as is and where is, which means we go pick it up. However it looks and whatever's wrong with it is our problem. So he reached back out to them to see what the difference would be to have them go through it and, and that pretty much it was 14,900, no matter what truck it was. That was the same for all four trucks.
Yeah, to go through and service them and make sure everything's right.
Yes. As is, we got verification that the existed, that it had an existing DOT certification and dielectric certification. But as whatever was there, when it expires, it expires. They would remove the decals and we would get a fire extinguisher, wheel chocks and lanyard. Don't ask me what that is, I don't know.
Cable strap that I used to.
Does that include any type of warranty?
No, that's everything as is. So the other way, we get a 30-day warranty, but they go completely through the truck and they repair the things that need to be repaired. They take off the decals and repaint it as needed. They update the DOT and dialect certification, so they're, they start fresh. We get two manuals and we get everything that I listed below, plus we get a safety harness, a 30-day warranty, and they deliver it to us if we, if we need. So figuring what we get from Milton that, you know, that could pay for this portion of it. And, and I'm just throwing my opinion out there. It makes more sense to have one that's been worked through instead of just grabbing something that has somebody else's problems. That could be more than $15,000 worth of work. So that's kind of.
And hopefully in 30 days, you could really check it out and make sure there isn't.
Wolf works, got to.
Yes. Make sure there was nothing else they missed or didn't repair.
Where are these located?
Fort Wayne.
Fort Wayne?
Yep, they're on the lot in Fort Wayne.
So the two prices that you have with the, them going through the truck, I think the first one is 55.9?
Yes.
64.9?
Yes.
I actually like person, like truck one better. It's cheaper, it has less miles and has less hours.
And it's a couple of years older, is all?
That's the one that?
That's the one, that's the one that I had at the top of my list. And then the number three was my second choice.
Did my number one?
No, number one, I like number one and number three.
They're basically identical trucks.
Yeah. They're pretty close to being the same.
Just two years difference.
Few years of mileage.
So on the price side of that, that is something, like I said, we would be reimbursed for whatever we get from, we agree with Milton on the old bucket truck. I feel that we can pay for that out of the electric cash reserve and utility depreciation and not have to get a loan on it. I think we can do that. That's mostly what the, the electric and the depreciation, the cash reserve is there for if at all possible is to replace equipment.
So are you planning on going up and driving both of these, looking them over yourself before you, before you go any farther?
And it, I mean, I think he said 30 to 60 days is the turnaround time for them to get done what they need to do. And then we would have the truck within that amount of time.
So do we want to put a maximum dollar amount in case this one doesn't? You, you know, you might see something else there and this one isn't what you thought it was. Because I know you and Nathan will probably go up there. Does the board want to put a maximum spending amount?
I mean, I'm good with either of these.
But huh?
I mean, I'm good with either of these. It'd be nice not to go over, you know, 65, that puts us about 50. It'd be nice not to go a lot higher, but.
Basically just if truck one doesn't work, we will go for truck three is maybe how the motion would look.
Yeah. Okay, that's.
So instead of 55.9, if that doesn't work out, then we go to 64.9.
Would you still finance that or? Would you still have a lot of money?
Okay.
I would make sure, I would make sure that the hydraulic tools on our old truck can fit this one. That saves us a few dollars for the impact gun and trim and stuff.
Yeah, I don't even know that, that option anymore because everybody's using electric now. So, yeah. Electric tools now, battery operators.
It all works off power takeoff, doesn't it?
Yeah, the pumps and stuff does, yeah.
They're not set up that way, you shouldn't leave it just.
Well, the newer trucks, the newer trucks now, they're using battery operated sols.
Of course, going still, I was saying, to use our equipment, all we have to do is install the T in that line, on the fresh line.
Everybody's got the connections up in the bucket to do it.
Jerry, is there any reason that the hydraulic fluid would be different and the tools would not be compatible?
See whether he got electric.
He'd probably want to look and see what, look on the spec sheets of what they, what they're running and what the tools take. I mean, most of the stuff is AW32, like in the Aireals, or 46.
Well, I know at Firehouse, I know we had a conversation with the different companies with the jaws of life, you couldn't.
First, it was, back then it was totally different. It was a special fluid. And if you weren't careful, you'd get it on your hands, deep skin on your hands. That's just how potent it was.
Don't either.
But most like, like he's saying, anything, using their rescue tools anymore, all going battery operated. All the news.
I know delivery would be later. Does the board want to give permission up to the maximum of the 65 for Nathan to go ahead and sign documents and purchase if it's, if they feel that it's a, authorize them to purchase, I guess.
Before somebody else takes it?
Yes.
Well, is this, is this number four truck actually better than the others? I suppose it's probably higher. It's 71.
I think it's got a lot more miles.
So it's a 17, it's more truck. It has more mileage. Yeah. And.
It was a higher price than I know because it was not that much newer, that much better. So 2018, we want it.
I just, I just think that, you know, the, for us, I think truck one works the best. So for what we need. Yeah.
All right, so we need to get a motion to approve an initial expense of $55,900 to purchase this truck from Fort Wayne, I don't know who the company is. I'll pick.
Altech.
Newco?
Newco.
And if that particular truck doesn't work, we'll go to option two, which would be $64,900. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
With that authorizing Nathan to sign whatever document and make the decision to make the purchase while he's there?
Yes.
Right. He's got authority and Lenny's got to live with it, so. Which truck is it we're going with?
Number one or three.
Hopefully number one.
Now we need to do another motion to approve selling our old truck to the town of Milton. And then the question is, do we want to go ahead and give it to them or do we want to hold on to it till we get the truck?
Is it still working?
I think we hold on to it.
Yeah, we need to hold on to it.
Till they tell us, Jerry, to make sure.
Like you said, up to 60 days.
Oh, as far as the money, well, I think we can work.
We'll have to do an interlocal agreement, I think. So I'll have to get with Bob on that, how that works. But if we've got the dollar figure, both, both towns have the dollar figure. We can go ahead and agree to that. And once we have possession, it'll be included in the motion that once we have possession, we can.
Rent our ours.
Yes.
Basically where we go there, our cities, interlocal agree. That way you don't have to go to bid.
All right, motion to approve selling our old bucket truck to the town of Milton and getting Bob to draw up an interlocal agreement unless their lawyer happens to volunteer to do it.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
In the amount of?
1,500.
How about a little more than that?
I do remember I gave them an amount and they came back with a counter offer. I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was somewhere in that neighborhood. I think I started out with 20 and they said they could do 15. So I don't know if we've actually got that roped down anywhere. Okay. So that's the goal, is fifteen. Hopefully, they'll still have the funds. All right, motion to approve all that?
Yep.
Any opposed? All right, you done, sir?
I believe so.
You had your last chance.
Yeah.
Julie's up with the clerk's report.
Okay. You should have your time cards and your fuel reports. That is it for my reports, but I will keep going. One, our vision. We get our employee vision through the standard. And once again, which they've pretty well stayed the same, I think, for three years, after reviewing the current plan, they decided to keep us at the same rate guaranteed through May first of 2026. So that is a good.
Are the employees going to use it? Do you use it?
No, I don't use it.
I mean, you do it every year and stuff, okay.
Yes, I use it.
I just want to make sure, you know, we're using stuff like this.
Yes. I think you are too, aren't you?
Actually, all three of us are.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm kind of moving on down the new business, I'm sorry.
You're just giving that to us for informational purposes?
Yes, that was just for informational purposes. You want me to keep going?
You don't, too.
Okay.
Want to talk about the proposal for our notification system?
Yes, yes, yes. Up ahead is the proposal system. The difference between this and the Reach Alert program that we have now is our... Reach Alert is one-way. I can send things out notifying people for just like what we've been going through, oil alerts, power outages, events, things like that. That's all we can do. This one is a two-way. So we can send out information, and then we can departmentalize, and people can send messages back to us. They could send me, you know, a message saying, hey, my trash didn't get picked up, or there's a large pothole that, you know, needs to be taken care of, concerns and things like that. So they can interact in this way, which makes it a little nicer. I'm trying to think what else. It's been a while since I've talked to him, so I apologize for that.
You can do surveys and things like that, it looks like?
Yes, we can do surveys on it as well, which is really a really good option if we are continuing to do grants and things like that. It helps out. Surveys for like our annexation thing that we may be doing in the future and those kind of things. They are at a hundred and twenty-four dollars a month, which is fourteen eighty-eight a year. The last we paid Reach Alert last year was nine hundred and eighty. I haven't got a new bill for what they're going to be for this year. But the difference between those is a little over five hundred dollars. I feel the ability to have, you know, the customers can... More and more people are doing everything digital. So to me, I think it's worth a change, but that's my recommendation.
I don't know how technical you got, but do you know how many people could receive the return? So like, take for instance, if we had an issue with somebody didn't get their trash picked up, and you got notified of that, could the trash company also receive that notification at the same time?
That I don't know.
Just like say if you were on vacation that day or whatever?
Sure. I mean, they're saying that they can departmentalize it, so I can get office stuff, Lenny can get stuff, so I don't know why we couldn't include that on there. My contact for Rumpy and have her on there as well. Yeah, because between the missed trash and the missing totes, that kind of... It might be a... Yeah, that would be... That would be a good suggestion. I think I can do that.
I mean, all things sounds like a nice thing for me. I mean, without, you know, spending a lot more money. It's, you know, pretty minor, I think, for the abilities and the advantages that we can have with it. You know, especially enough, we've got to do this survey. I mean, that's something we can just send out in a matter of seconds and not have to go door-to-door and so forth. But it's just a matter of trying to get everybody to sign up for it will be our thing.
So it says it's a text message, so that this isn't an app that has to be installed?
No.
And then, so they can reply to any text message?
Yes.
So you're sending a text message to everyone? Everyone can reply on that?
Well, no, the mass text messaging is what I do now.
Right.
They... It would revert back just to me. It's not going to go out to everybody.
Okay.
Yes. It would just, you know... There would not be an answer to my... Unless it's a survey that's different. So I would have to see how that would work.
Basically, for the big pothole in front of your house, you can reply and say, there's a pothole in front of my house. And that way, you don't have to come up here and physically be in person or...
It would be something you click on. The survey would be different. I'm assuming that you would have, same thing, you would have a button that you can click on the survey, and you can do it, and it would come back to me. It wouldn't go out to everyone. It would be a link that...
I'm just wondering how you would text a problem if it's not an app? Like, how would you...
Well, the way Reach Alert now is not an app, you just get texts.
Right. So say I wanted to report a pothole, how do I do that without using an app, just using a text message?
I don't know, I think it'd be...
And then how...
It'd go to everybody. I think everybody would get it.
No, there might be an app.
That's what I'm thinking, there has to be an app with this.
If you just separate it, yeah.
I see what you're saying.
That's what... I get the text message to everyone, but then to report a pothole, I would have to use an app.
Right.
Yes.
Because if you put it on your pothole area, everybody else is going to...
Right, that's what I didn't know how that worked. I personally don't want another app.
It keeps saying text messages, so...
I don't mind the text message, that's fine, but I don't want another app on my phone. And I have a feeling, then you're going to have to have a login. I have a lot of feeling, a lot of people may feel the same.
All the words say text from everything.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I'm trying to figure out how that would work. How would I text Lenny specifically about a pothole?
Exactly, exactly.
Without it being through an app? How would I report that?
Okay. So those are questions that I need to take to them, so we can table this until...
But price-wise, I'm good with it.
Okay.
And they were... Was it the setup fee they were going to knock off for us?
Yes, they waived that.
Yeah, and it's at a three-year commitment.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts to find out for next month?
If you do, let me know, and I will... He called me actually today, so I will reach out to him and get some more information.
Thank you. Anything else?
The Leary construction renewal agreement? And I will just keep going down. The... What I... The paperwork that I gave Bob last time, which confused him, was Leary's original proposal. It was not their original agreement, or original contract. Had he had that, which I know he reviewed that back then, but that's been eleven years ago, he would have had a better understanding. Basically, what Leary's contract is, it's a ten-year contract in which we pay a set amount each year of that ten-year contract, and it stays the same for the whole ten years. And within that ten years, they do different maintenance things at the tower depending on... They do inspections every year, I believe, and they do other maintenance things at different stages in that ten years. We have... I don't have mine. We have the same, I think it's thirty or sixty days, that we can cancel if need be. Sixty days with prior written notice. Otherwise, it will continue for the full ten years. And then, just like this one, at the end of the ten years, we will get another agreement like this that will go for the next ten years and so on.
One of the questions was if the price changed from the last contract we had.
Yes, it did. It went up two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars per year. We were paying from 2014 to 2023, we were paying nine hundred... Nine thousand two hundred and twenty dollars a year. And this one will be from 2024 to 2033, I believe, and it will be eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty per year. And it stays the same each year for that ten-year period.
Lenny, have you had any issues with these folks?
No.
No? I feel like we're getting our money for it.
Yeah. Yeah. They have... Just a little better job cleaning up next time, you know, but I can take care of that.
Did we use them before we had this?
Yeah, Leary used... For the old water tower, we usually were all in years and stuff. But Phoenix put the tank up, so we kept with them for the first ten years.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And then we went back to Leary after that, yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? I will seek approval.
Bob drawing up a new contract, or we're going to...
He just didn't understand it.
Okay.
Motion to approve the Leary proposal?
All right.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve the Leary construction preventative maintenance program. So basically, they take care of our water tower as far as painting it, inside, outside, and all the inspections. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Last but not least is the Westler agreement.
And this is for our consumer confidence.
CCR.
Part CCR for short. Westlers has been helping us out with this for many years. This one did not go up, it's still a thousand dollars. Mm-hmm. We have been at a thousand dollars since 2023. Before that, we were at nine hundred, and my book's going way back to seventeen, 2017, and we were at nine hundred from 2017 to 2022. So they try to help us out cost-wise, and we give them all of our testing information. They make sure that all of our legal requirements from the state and from IDM is included in those reports and prepare everything for me to mail out to everybody.
Lenny, any issues on your end, sir? Are satisfied? Think they've always been a good partner with us?
Sure have.
Motion to approve the CCR with Westler?
Make a motion, accept the agreement with Westler's CCR report.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. With that, would we like to pay our bills this month?
No. Just wait.
I have one question, but can't remember what it was.
Yes, sir.
Oh, O'Reilly Parks, we got water equipment repairs. This is the first one on the second page. We got truck thirteen, is that footy one, three, or is that...
Truck thirteen is the ambulance.
Oh, okay.
That's our new one.
Okay.
Any other questions on the claims?
No.
Make a motion, accept the financial report.
No, how about the claims?
No claims, okay, do the claims first.
Got a motion to approve the claims, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes to pay the bills. All right, now, Rex, we got the financial report.
Okay.
Anything out of the ordinary, Julie?
No.
Everything good as we're getting started about the third way through the year?
Yes.
Very well.
And we're doing pretty good. The thing we did not give an update on was the sidewalks.
No. Yeah. So the... They got the one down over here, they got Johnson Street on that end done, they got the one in front of the church done, and they're going to be starting over here in front of... Right across the street from the... Many more catty corner there. That'll be the next one. Then they'll jump to this side and do that one. So those are the two he's told me right now, so then he'll let me know is where his next is going to be, so...
Question I have is down here on Forty and Foundry, where we had that water leak?
He's getting me a press.
Okay.
He's getting me a press.
And we did extend the sidewalk on Maple in front of the church to go to the alley.
Yes.
That was an additional six hundred and fifty dollars that was agreed upon by everyone, so that'll be added on.
They did a good job, helped the press, so... All right, motion to...
Make a motion, accept financial report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Would somebody like to adjourn the meeting tonight?
No, do adjourn.
All right, so...
Second.
We'll see you next month.